Four times every other week or so? And we'll have two teams going out, a teacher and a parent advocate. Two teams.
Then the other thing too is that the teacher on Bob will also be helping this, so if they come in before the next visit, then they can download some more books that are at their grade level or interest and all that. So that's gonna be very helpful. Can you mention the last thing about how it's possible to access your students? Other students?
Oh, no, we didn't sit down.
But I figured hotspots are hotspots.
Yeah, it is, and the company, because of its interest in this program and presumably also because they want to sell us things, has taken the cap off. So we've, we're gonna buy the licenses for fifty, and then they said, basically, beyond that, you can open up and other kids, even though we're not paying those licenses, participate.
And we're not gonna be doing home visits on those additional.
Right, but we'll be able to use the program and have kids access.
So if other parents have an iPad and they would like to go to Bob and download books, you know, they can do that. That's, that's good.
What's the length of the program? It'll start June third, and it'll go through July twenty-fifth, and we'll have the week of July four off. It'll be most of the summer.
Pretty much the entire summer, so.
Correct.
Will you be able to track as you go through the summer how many books the students are getting?
And that's one of the things we want the parent advocates to talk to the parents about as they go in. Talk to the kids about what they're reading, or talk to the parents about how much their kids are reading.
And then, in order to collaborate with this, again, where are the funding coming from?
This is through a grant, through the State Department of Education.
One grant, it's not several programs.
No, it's just the one.
This is the migrant program. And that's why it's a migrant. That's, that's why the student charter is a migrant.
I wish we could get all students with mandatory summer reading assignments, but we gotta start, gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, we figure if this pilot goes well, and we could participate next year.
That's really been the goal for about the last fifteen years, and Bob has been successful. For those kids who come frequently, we see them either staying where they are or growing over the summer. So I think it can all kids to read.
Jamie, I wanna thank you for being honest with your, you know, your reservations on this, on this technology, and how it worked, and can we get parent buy-in, and your comfort level, because you're not alone. And we need to share those feelings so that they can also see that you, you went past that.
Yes.
Because this, this technology's here. It's not going anywhere, and the, the longer you wait to, to get on the bandwagon, you're just missing out on things. So I, I appreciate you being honest and speaking up like that, because like Coach Casilius said, there's that range in the high school as well. The faster we can get people more comfortable with this technology, everybody's gonna succeed.
Well, when, you know, this was brought to me, I mean, it sounded exciting and all, but, you know, they can tell you that. I had my reservations, okay? And I said, give me a couple of days to go home, think about it, and I did. I, I mean, I started trying to think how this could be done, because I didn't want it to be just, here's an iPad, okay, come to, you know, Bob, and you can download books, we'll see you at the end of the summer. How do you want that? And so bringing in that parent component, I think, is very critical. And, and so that's when, you know, I said, you know, doing the home visits and getting the parents involved, make them feel comfortable, just like you were, you know, telling Mr. Casilius about, getting more teachers involved, and you tell more people to be, you know, comfortable with that. And sure, it may take a little, you know, time, but once they get used to it and know how to maneuver and go through it, I mean, I see that there would be a lot of success with that, so.
Our kids are very lucky to be in our district. You know, we've seen several examples of that already tonight.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's right, and the earlier we can give, you know, on board.
Amen.
I would just like to say that I think having those visits in the home is really a fantastic first step to, to having parents be comfortable with our staff members. Because I think over the summer, of course, in the summer, they'll really get to know each other, and that will really transfer well into the school year for the parents, then maybe moving into the school of the past. And the other thing is, I think that, I expect this to go really well, because I think every time we have raised expectations, sort of holding our breath, we have been, been very pleasantly surprised with the results. We've done that a number of times in the past few years, and we've just been thrilled that, that people have risen to meet those expectations. And I, I fully expect this to be a successful program, and I'll say thank you. Great invitation.
Thank you.
It's like now we're moving into the early childhood report.
Okay, I will try to be quick. I wanna thank you all for letting us be here tonight. I'd like to introduce my staff. Dana Becker is from Parents as Teachers. Annette Wyatt's one of my early childhood teachers. Margaret Lady's one of our speech pathologists. Matt Connel's another early childhood teacher. Renee Hugel's an early childhood teacher, and Andrea Baker is one of our elf teachers. And these three drew the short straws, so they got stuck presenting with me tonight. We just kinda wanna update you all on, on where we're at, as far as, as far as building, and kind of things that we've accomplished this year, and some things that we still need to continue to work on. This kinda gives you an idea of, of where we started at the beginning of the year. Our September twentieth count, you can see we were, we were at four hundred and nineteen students total. We had a hundred and thirty-six that were on IEPs, and a hundred and eighteen students that were second language learners. As of last week, we are at five hundred and eighteen, so we've grown just about a hundred students since September twentieth. We have two hundred and thirty-two students now on IEPs, and a hundred and twenty-two of our students are, are getting ESL services. Parents as Teachers has, since July first of last year, has seen three hundred and sixty-five children. They've done eight hundred and sixty-nine screenings, and we've had a hundred and fourteen referrals for various things. It could be medical, dental, I think forty-seven, is that what you told me, Dana? Were for, were referred to Russell for, for further evaluation with them. So, Renee, you're up. I'll let you kinda visit about some of the stuff that, that we've done so far.
Okay. The goal of the Early Childhood Center is to get all the kids ready for kindergarten. With that in mind, as the curriculum and the district are going to Common Core, we need to be flexible and change what we are doing also. We have to think about the fact that our kids need to leave us being able to count to twenty, and identifying numbers zero through ten. And some of them come to us not counting at all, or not knowing any of their numbers. So that's kind of a huge gap that we have to fill. In knowing that the rest of the district is going to Common Core, we, as a school, have spent a lot of time talking about our report cards, and the need to update our report cards, because right now, our report cards are just yes, no, or sometimes. Well, how do you tell if the kid is sometimes doing a skill, sometimes cutting on the line, sometimes able to count? It's hard for us to determine, and it's hard for the parents to understand. So this year, we have, with the help of our physical therapists, our occupational therapists, and our speech and language therapists, we have come up with a brand-new report card that looks at where we want them to be at the end of the year. The numbers that you see next to the three or four, that is the skill that, at age three, they need to be able to identify the beginning letter of their name. As you go down, you hit what the four-year-olds are supposed to be able to do. So this helps us communicate to the parents, while your child is four, they are only able to really do the three-year-old skills. These are the four-year-old skills that we are looking at them trying to do. And that goes through all of the areas that we work on, communication, cognitive, the shapes, social, emotional skills that we like to set in place at the very young age before they go onto kindergarten, motor development, and this is where our physical therapists and our occupational therapists came in handy, because they could say, well, that's not really appropriate in three, but it is at four. So it also helps give the parents a better idea of where their child really is.
I think that's been one of the greatest things this year about having all of our early childhood programs in one building, and having all of our support staff working out of that building. There's been a lot of great collaboration that's gone on with our, with our speech pathologists, with our physical therapists, with our occupational therapists. You know, having, having Dan and her staff in the building. We have staffings, and we'll see that there's a, a little, a little toddler there that may be one or two years old. And let me refer you to Parents as Teachers, and so we've really been trying to develop a lot more of that communication so we can identify those kids that need specific services. Along with the, the report card, obviously, I know that there was some discussion about the curriculum. We talked about that, and so Andrea's gonna kind of update you all as far as where we are with the curriculum and our plans for that.
I know when some of you had visited our building before, it was a very heated topic. And with that being said, I just, with the new curriculum, I mean, there's many challenges that come with that. And I'm here celebrating, woo, we made it! Through our first year of, of a new curriculum. With any curriculum, I mean, there's no perfect curriculum out there. I think you all know that. And after being able to use this for a year, we've seen strengths in the curriculum, and we've seen weaknesses within the curriculum. And some of the weaknesses were in literacy and math, and those are huge domains that we're teaching to preschoolers. And so I know this summer, we're gonna be meeting a group of teachers, Mr. Guiman, Leanne, and looking at things that we maybe need to realign a little bit, or put some more emphasis on that maybe wasn't throughout the curriculum. So we have a short, long video that you can kinda say a little more about it to Alan.
Splash's nine themed teacher's editions, each covering four full weeks of instruction, are designed for ease of use so teachers can spend more quality time with their children. Weekly learning goals guide teachers towards instructional targets. And daily lesson plans and materials checklist are provided for easy planning. Splash's flexible instruction focuses on classroom management, providing the right tools for success with both large and small group activities. Splash's intentional teaching focuses on the whole child within a consistent daily structure. The program integrates language and literacy development, listening comprehension, oral language, vocabulary development, and math throughout every lesson. Multiple center opportunities are included for every day, offering many, diverse activities to meet the needs of a wide range of students. And activities that stimulate all eight multiple intelligences are incorporated as part of the daily flow of Splash's integrated program.
So with that, like, I know some of the math that we had looked at, or had taught this year, like, the very beginning of the year, this was something that was being taught, where the foundation of shapes wasn't there with this curriculum. We were already going at the sphere, cube, pyramid, triangular prism, rectangular prism, talking about Mr. Isosceles, and Mr. Scalene, and quadrilateral, parallelograms, rhombuses, and trapezoids. So, I mean, where we're seeing, maybe they're thinking the kids are gonna come in already knowing their shapes, or knowing their colors, and, and our students aren't there. So we've gotta kinda go back and get that foundation built, and then go on to the higher level.
I have some comment on that, though. I agree, like you mentioned. I walked away thinking, not that it was necessarily heated, but it was very passionate. And that's what I walked away with. You know, you guys were just, you needed some help and some reassurance, and hopefully it was provided to you, and we got you where you needed to be. But I, I think good things come from change, and we just spoke a lot about that. I mean, just the acceptance and adaptation to the iPad in itself. I mean, we're going through a lot of growing pains. Common Core has us kind of off our balance right now, but we're doing a great job recollecting ourselves and getting, establishing new curriculum and utilizing new devices. But I, I want you guys to just be proud of the fact that you're passionate teachers, and know that that will affect what you do in the classroom.
I would agree. I think, you know, as far as the staff, we may not always agree with each other all the time, but at the end of the day, I would, I would say that all of my teachers definitely have their child's best interests at heart. They, they're there to do what's best for kids. And so I think that's created a lot of really good dialogue for us. The last thing we wanted to share with you all was just some data. We've done the Peabody Picture Vocabulary Test. We started, started that this year. And so we did it in January. Our goal next year is to do it in August and in, and in May. So we kinda have some entrance and exit results for our kiddos, but I'll let Matt kind of explain the test.
Typically, we would do this in the fall and in the spring. With all the changes in early childhood, we decided to push that up until January. In January, we tested four hundred and sixty-two kids in our building. That was all about, all but about twenty students were unable to be tested at that time. Building-wise, we had a delay of about thirteen months, which is significant for some of our kids. Like, if you think our kids are three, four, five years old, we're talking at least a delay of one year or greater. Some of our students at that time, in individual areas, were showing delays of two or more years. Our lowest classroom had a twenty-two month delay. Our highest classroom was still delayed four months in January. So we saw this data, we looked at it, we talked about it in PLCs, talked about it at faculty meetings, and moved forward. So four months later or so, in the spring, we did this at the beginning of May, we tested five hundred and seven students. You can see the breakdown of sped in ESL. Now we have a building delay of nine months. So we definitely closed the gap from around thirteen or so to nine months. So we certainly brought that a little bit closer together. Our, our lowest classroom is now only nineteen months behind, and our highest classroom actually shows the class average is actually four months ahead of their chronological age. So we definitely made some gains there. The chart is actually broken down by classrooms, which is the same chart that you, that you folks have. Each number of.
I will tell you, when you look at that, negatives are positive when you look at that. But it's just the way that we, when we entered the information in Excel. So if you see numbers below zero, these are actually classes that are performing above what their chronological average age would be. And then these are the kids where we see the, does that make sense?
So we would take a student in sixty months, and they're performing at sixty-two months. That's a two-month difference, negative two, that would be, was actually really positive. So you can see the blue, or the darker blue there, is our, our scores in January for each classroom, and then again in May as well. The overwhelming majority of classes have certainly made, in a lot of cases, significant gains in the last four months. We're hoping to see this even, probably more next year. We do the test sometime in September, and again sometime in late April or early May.
As you understand that chart, if you have one through twenty, is what?
Uh, one through twenty is the classroom. Every classroom had a number.
We have twenty classrooms, one classroom, one classroom two.
Can you go back to that chart? Maybe?
Should they ask me to, okay, explain to me the yellow at number fifteen. Why, why such a drop? What's that mean?
This is actually, um, this would be a classroom who is actually four months ahead of their chronological age. For example, if a student was, if, if the class average was sixty months, that was their age. They were performing at sixty-four months. A child who was sixty-four months.
So, and this, these are the two same classes. So this is January for that class, and then this would be May. And so that would be, it's like they were about six months behind at, at their age equivalent at that time, and now they're roughly four months ahead of their age equivalent.
So in four, in the four months since we gave the test, they made about ten months progress. Thank you.
Why is months x classroom?
Sorry?
Y-axis is months.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So it's like classroom fourteen.
They made about a month's gain.
Okay, and each classroom has a relatively same mix of student types? Or is that maybe a higher risk student group, or?
Actually, all of our classes down to eight are elf and migrant. At nine, actually, eight through twenty are.
Nine through twenty.
Nine through twenty are special ed classrooms.
Okay.
So my first two classrooms would be my three-year-old migrant classrooms, and then three through eight would be our elf classrooms, and then nine through twelve would be our early childhood special ed classrooms.
Elf is doing awesome. I mean, they're all doing great, but seriously, that's, that's awesome.
And when you think about the population of our building, everybody in our building has to qualify for our services in some format, whether it be at RIS, or through special ed. So we don't have, other than our peer program, we don't necessarily have any typically developing preschoolers at the center.
I had a parent come talk to me completely off her rocker mad because her student, her three-year-old was not accepting them in the elf program. And I had to educate her, like, consider it a blessing. Your student is doing well, they don't qualify, they don't have special needs. But that, I mean, it's a wanted program. This community wants more access to that.
In enrollment day, Jenny can kind of attest to that. We dealt with a few upset parents during enrollment, because they, one of their kiddos is an elf, and for whatever reason, the kids didn't qualify, and so.
But they did an awesome job on, for those, was it two days we did it?
Yeah.
And I tell you what, parents came in, their children enrolled them, and Josh and his staff did a wonderful job just getting it all recorded, and so they, it went very smoothly. Because not only were they doing the whole enrollment, but they were able to do the assessment of the children at the same time. And it went very smoothly.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Are you sharing, I assume you're sharing this data with your parents?
We actually just finished that data this afternoon, Dr. Ethan, so I haven't had the opportunity yet.
I finished that spreadsheet at two-thirty.
How about the gray part?
We haven't yet, because we've been going through the, let's make sure we got everything we want on there. Then I had to have Leanne sign off it, off of it from instruction. Roxy had to look at it, make sure she was good with it. We're at a point now where we're ready to start sharing some of that information.
Your teachers, how are they receiving this data?
They haven't seen it yet, honestly. So, I mean, they've seen their own classroom.
This has been a secret.
Yeah. Literally, we just got it done two-thirty today, so.
I really would like to hear a report this time next year, after you went through this. I, I'm excited that you are quantifying what you're doing with our kids. And that you're helping these kids be the most they can possibly be. And you're seeing data here that you're making a difference in these kids' lives. From the, you know, from what you're doing here with the gray heart, competencies. When they live into kindergarten, that kindergarten teacher is going to know exactly what they know. And that's what we're going to have to teach them.
Right. And that's, that, I, I think, that's the elementary principle, mind in me, because I know, like, kindergarten was always a struggle for us every year. It was easy to, we had all kinds of data on first through fourth grade. We knew exactly where those kids were, we knew what they, what they knew. And kindergarten, we had no idea what our kids knew coming in. And so this is something I'm actually, Matt has created a folder for all of the, all of the elementary schools. And so in the next few days, I'll be getting this information to all the principals too, so that they'll have this data, so that that'll give them kind of a starting point for their. Now, obviously, that's not gonna be every single kindergartner, but at least the kindergartners that we've had, they'll have some data, and it'll give them a starting point for those kids as well.
Well, and two weeks ago, when we had the kindergarten roundup, every building we went to, they were saying, we can really tell the kids that came from Josh's building, because they are much higher than, you know, normal. You could see that. So their whole staff's been committed for the job they did this year.
Absolutely, Josh, I see your view of the staff, the hard work, because I know it was a struggle this year for you. And I, I applaud this, this is wonderful work that you're doing for our kids.
Well, thank you, and I, I, obviously, I, it's, it's the staff. These guys have been awesome. I've, I've thrown a lot of hurdles at them, and they've done a good job as far as, you know, everything I've asked them to do, they've definitely stepped up and, and done a great job. Like I said, we may not always agree, but we find a way to get it done, and, and there, I couldn't ask for a better group of people to work with, so.
Well, pass on our congratulations to all of your staff for us, and thank them for their hard work in, in that very difficult transition year.
Absolutely. Well, and thank you all for, for having the mission to have the early childhood building. I think that, you know, it's, it's awesome. I, I love the building, and I love the little people. I go home every day, and I've got, you know, slobbering booger marks around the house. It's, it's a great place to work, and I, I love the building, and I love the people that I work with, so.
Well, Leanne's gotta love this, for, to go right along with our, our pilot program for the first grade readiness.
Yeah.
Program as well. I mean, we're all, we're, we're doing so many things that are cohesive, help the next group of educators to do their job to the best of their ability.
Quick question, I've just wrapped my mind around standard here again. When you say you're fifteen months behind, again, what's that standard that we're comparing them to?
Okay, so we have their age, their, their chronological age. So they're, let's say they're four years and five months old at the time that we give the test, okay? And after you go through and you score the PPT, it'll give you an age equivalent. So if I'm performing at four years, and if my chronological age is four years and eight months, my age equivalent can be three years and two months. And so that's where you get that from.
And we had to convert it to months.
And there's a whole lot of, and.
That's why it's.
Margaret, if I'm saying things wrong here, please feel free to interrupt me here, because Margaret's well-versed on this a lot more so than I am, but there's like, you know, you come up with a, a raw score, and then a standard score, and from all those scores, then that gives you your chronological age. We use the, or, excuse me, the age equivalent. We use that because that's numbers, I think, that parents can understand easier than, than a standard score would be. And so that's why we, we use those numbers.
Kinda curious where that fits into, or maybe we're out there ahead of the curve, where that fits into other schools, other similar programs in Kansas.
Yeah.
That, that's a broader question, I realize, but it has nothing to do with the great things we're doing here for these kids and these families, and, and for our purposes. I'm just curious, so.
Well, and I know vocabulary is an issue, I think. And Darren would probably, and Leanne, I think vocabulary is an issue for us as a district. You know, when you think of, of all the diversity we have in this district, and the amount of students that we have that are second language learners, the amount of students that we have that come from poverty, you look at the research on poverty, and the amount of kids that, that, the amount of words that kids that come from poverty have versus, you know, a typical middle school family. And so I know, like, when I was at V O, we were talking, you know, two and a half year, the kids, our kindergartners were entering the door with us two and a half years behind where they should be for their age with, with terms of vocabulary. So it's, it's an issue, I think, as far as a district. And that's something that we've talked about. When you look at the focus for Common Core and it being writing, well, we don't do a whole lot of writing. Obviously, at our level, we're still teaching them their letters and things like that. But the beginning pieces of writing is putting your thoughts together, and being able to get those kids to express their thoughts verbally, and that's gonna lead to writing. So that's really been kind of a focus that we've talked about, you know, at our level.
It certainly emphasizes that, that challenge that we have. We have a certain goals and standards that we're setting for these kids in first grade. How much of a challenge it is for your center.
Oh, yeah.
How much we need your center.
Yeah. Well, yeah, 'cause I have kiddos, and I think every teacher in here that, that's here tonight will tell you, we have kiddos that come in, a lot of our kids, as we do staffings, and we take them in, they maybe have five or ten words as a three-year-old that they speak. And we've gotta get them to be able to speak. How many do they need to have by five years old, Margaret? What's the average?
One five hundred.
Yeah, and, and so in two years, I've gotta go from five to forty-five hundred, you know? And so these guys have a lot of, got a lot of work to do, you know? And of course, they're not all coming into us from those levels, but we have, we have quite a few that do it. And a lot of the times, when they just get immersed in an area that's a language environment, they take off. A lot of times, they don't, we've gotta do other things too, so.
I would just like to say that I'm very impressed with these statistics, because it has really unleashed a fortifying period of time, and, and the gains that this shows. Even where it's relatively the same, there's still five months of gain that this has shown. So it's, it's a very impressive chart. And I, I hope you'll continue to follow and track this over the next school year as well. So it's kind of telling. I'd also like to say, I'm really impressed that your staff is so involved, and so passionate about always trying to find a new way and a new method of better reaching these students. Because I think if you were all in agreement and very complacent, then we would have a big concern, because we know that things do change. There's always new, new ways to do things. And so I think that kind of involvement is exactly what we need, especially at that level. And I think that you are a really outstanding administrator for being able to, to handle that kind of discussion and, and now with something as amazing as this. Congratulations to all of you.
No questions?
The one thing we could do next year is actually photographing the kids that are gonna be in our program more than a year. Some of our kids will actually be there as long as two and a half, going up three years. So we will actually show the, the special ed students their gain over three years, once they're with us for a full three years, or almost three years.
Dana, did you have any?
We just completed our Parents as Teachers action survey, Parents as Teachers, and here are the results. So I wanted to give you a copy of those. We also have probably about four pages of parent comments that we collected over the last three months. We've done this. when we've done this survey, so if anybody is interested in seeing them, should just, I'll pet Josh and we can get those to you too.
All right, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Like, we're now going to look at the meeting dates for July.
What you have before you is proposed meeting dates for 2013, 14. These dates are aligned with our policy, they correspond to the most part to last year's dates. What I'm asking you this evening to do is, is to consider approving the July 8th and July 22nd date. This is what we normally do every year, and then, in the meantime, in the meantime, look over the rest of these dates to see how they work in your, in your personal schedules, but I'll be asking you to approve the rest of your dates in July, which is in line with Kansas State law when you reorganize the board. So, with that said, are there any questions regarding particularly the July 8th, July 22nd date?
There are emotions.
It's probably more than likely to case these kids.
Make sure you approve the July 8th, July 22nd date for our first two, four meetings.
Is there a second?
Say it.
It's moved in seconds, or any discussion?
I just have something to add, I, I'm in favor of these dates, but last year I made a mistake of, of planning a family vacation during this time, and it, these are two really important meetings that we all need to be here for, there's a lot of important things we need to discuss, so, don't do what I did. I'm a scheduling error.
Mark's not.
Just one of the, I will be, we'll be able to make that happen.
Is anyone else there? There's no more discussion, I'm in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please?
If you have conflicts in the other dates, please let me know, and once you approve those, approve your dates in July, then I'll try to dovetail in a board retreat in the fall, probably in November or Monday, and possibly maybe in March or April on a Monday. It seemed like, if you feel differently, certainly let me know, but the last time when we had the board retreat on Monday, that worked a little better than on Saturday for your, for your family's schedules. So, if I'm wrong about that, let me know, but after we approve these dates, I'll probably come back with some suggestions for a couple of board retreats.
Okay, moving on to the revisions to the district organizational chart.
This is, uh, this is board policy, the district organizational chart. The previous chart not only had the position, but also had the name of the person in the position. I've eliminated that on this revision because names do change, and so we would be probably updating this more frequently than we, than we need to. But also in the revision, in addition to the names, for the position being omitted, changed the name of, to Director of Technology from Coordinator, from Coordinator of Elementary Education to Director of Elementary, and that's, that is the names of these positions now and what they've been for the last couple of years, so this is just making sure the policy is in line with our practice. And then, as you know, we eliminated the Coordinator of Secondary Education, and Mr. Norby moved from this position to Associate Principal at Garden City High School, so that eliminated that disposition totally. The only other change is that down underneath Technology, we added the one-to-one initiative, which is in line with what we're building as a job description here. So, with that said, I would, if you're comfortable, I would ask you to approve this organizational chart as presented, or, in the meantime, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have, but I think it's important that the organizational chart reflect our practice and what we're actually doing.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Sorry, go.
It's been moved in the second to approve the revisions to the district organizational chart, is there any discussion?
Just a quick question, I guess I'm not missing it here, maybe it's the lack of bifolds, but, Special, and Dr. Johnson, where's Dr. Johnson's position here?
Dr. Johnson is Director of Special Services Programs. Got a lot of people reporting to her.
Is there any further discussion?
You know, I understand names change, but it's easier for me to see the names. And I'm okay with the diagram, the chart as it is, but can we have another chart that has names on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have that.
I could put it, I, I could, I could do another chart with the names on it and pass that out to the board, that would be.
It would help me, it's just like Mark not knowing where Dr. Johnson was, I didn't even catch that there. It'd be easier for me to see your name, is your name in life?
Certainly, glad, glad to put that out to you.
I appreciate it, it's nice to know.
Not a problem at all, Joanne took them off, she could perfect it.
Matter of fact, maybe a snap of the fingers, it might be that quick, I don't know, it's pretty quick.
I, I think it is helpful to have some permanence or some longevity to some of these charts, and, and so, having a version of them is, is more positional rather than unique to a certain person is, is kind of helpful in a way too. So, I, I like the fact that we can do both, so that we can kind of place people where, where we understand them to be, but also have, have the long-range look at, at these positions.
This also may be helpful to you, because if you have this with the names on it, because when we do more goals and then we set the responsibilities for who's responsible, it will be by position, not by name, so it'll be by position, so you can use this when we put that on the side, so you can see. Good idea, and sometimes just a cultural thing we used in the past, you know, we're sped, you know? Sped isn't out here anywhere, it's, it's a new name apparently.
Okay, I'm in favor, please raise your hand, any opposed, please, something to the issue theory. And now, we'll leave to the board member comment.
Okay.
Steph, Steph, oh, facilities. The facility use agreement between USD 457 and Garden City Community College.
At your last meeting, at your last meeting, you approved expanding the Garden City High School alternate program, high school program by adding the virtual component. As you know, we have an adult education program there as well, and named our Bison program. We also have a regular ed program there where kids can, can earn credits, and you approved some time ago, twenty-one years of credit to, for a student to be able to graduate from Garden City High School alternate program. What you have before you this evening is even a further expansion of the programs offered at the alternate school in a partnership with Garden City Community College. I've met with Dr. Swinder and his leadership team, as well as my leadership team, and to include Mr. Ron, because we have a lot of space at J D Adams, it's not being used. And I think as many of you know, that was a career kind of vocational building there at one time, where we offered welding and some, some other vocational career courses. In this partnership with the college, we would like to increase the number of trades that are there, actually add trades there, not increase them, but add them there, we'd like to add welding, plumbing, HVAC, and electricity there, to give our kids at the alternate school an opportunity to broaden their horizon a little bit and move into some of these trades. If we can turn the light on for some of these kids moving into those areas, then when they graduate from high school, they'll have a job. They may have a job with Wallace Electric, they may have a job with Beechey Plumbing, they may have a job with Weber Air Conditioning, and it may be an entry-level type position, one that, that has turned the light on for them, created that spark of interest in them where they would get into an internship or an apprenticeship to actually become an electrician or a plumber or a welder over at Palmer, I know it's changed hands now, but they are looking for people that, that have skills in that arena. And we're always looking to, we grow the kid here in Garden City, and certainly would be nice to employ them here in Garden City, because I, I was talking to a gentleman that owns Comfort Specialist, had a little air conditioning problem in, in the household, and he was telling me he can't find people to work. And he's not going to hire in the area mediocrity because it hurt his business. And probably Alex can speak to this more than, than I can, but the goal here is to try to get our kids career-ready and, and possibly these kids get an interest, they go on in, they can earn dual credit with the college, they may even earn an associate's degree or move on to become a mechanical engineer or something like that. The kids at the alternate, alternate school are just as capable as our kids at the regular high school, and we want to give them those opportunities. Not asking you to approve this, it's still in the draft form this evening. I know Dr. Swinder has some things to work out from the college perspective, Mr. Ron is looking at some things as well, but we'll probably bring this back a year later to, to consider approving. Please keep in mind, this is not going to cost the district anything other than maybe adding a doorway or two in a couple of areas in the building. That building's already wired for the welding equipment and the equipment, the vocational equipment. In the agreement, the college is going to place the welders there, they're going to place the teachers there, and a lot of our kids will be scholarship and be able to earn their credit. With that said, do you have any questions or comments?
I see on this agreement that they will furnish the space, in other words, furniture and things like that?
They will, and if they need some assistance, we can, we can help them a little bit because we have some extra furniture there in that arena, but at the agreement, more than likely they're going to furnish a high percent of it.
And also I see where janitorial services, they'll be responsible for that on their space.
Absolutely.
And there's, there's no efficiencies to be gained by a, a simpler relationship, or is that just the cleanest way to go?
That was what we agreed to do, at one time we was going to ask them to furnish a half of a full-time custodian, but we ultimately agreed to the fact that they just would clean the space that they have, that they're using.
And then one final question, did we set up the space to where they lease it or rent it for one dollar? Is there any, I mean, that's just a grant question to you, I'm not experienced in this, is there any benefit to setting up to where leveraging or, or costs for that space could be more easily leveraged? I mean, if you buy for a grant and you're going to do in-kind and you say, well, your cost for the space was a buck, as opposed to true cost, does that, does that take away at all opportunities to leverage true costs with, for, for mobile space to get more dollars?
I don't think so from the standpoint, that, that would be our part that we're adding to the partnership, and it's just a legality of, of them paying a dollar, but that's the only cost really much to us. They're also paying, if you notice, forty percent of the electric bill for that building, but we do need to give them the numbers, I think we have to be able to give those as we get, but we'll give them two or three years if we can come up with that of the utility bills for J D Adams, because this last year really isn't probably good data form because there hasn't been welders in there operating, and we haven't been using a lot of that building.
I just think it's a great idea, just to take some details there, it sounds like we're going to continue to have some discussions.
I think the savings to us would be more handed front to the teachers. We don't have to provide that expensive equipment that's going into there as well. Those are two big things, we've got it right on our campus where our kids are, so they'll have the opportunity to do it. Plus, we gain some administrative support that we could run some of Mr. Vaughn's programs up in the evening, like his adult program, the Bison program, and some of the Bison students work during the day and it's difficult for them to get in to do their coursework. If we can keep that building open till eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, it's going to be beneficial to, to our kids as well as the college, so. I, I see it as a win-win for, for both the college and us, but we'll see how it comes about.
It is an annual agreement, so.
Yes, it, we do it a year, and if it doesn't work out for us, then try to do something else. But we do have the space, and we're trying to use the space primarily for academics. I mean, there are other things that we could use that space for in the school district, but we're trying to keep the priority of using it for academics. We could move our maintenance department in, move them in from three miles, two miles out of town, only next day. But I would prefer to try something like this to complement an alternate education program and see if we can get this to work.
I'm looking at the building map you got here on the last page. It looks like the college would be in the highlighted yellow areas.
Correct.
Will there be a door put in, in the hallways to separate what's going on in 457 and college?
There'll be two doors put in.
Okay, and then I don't see.
Segregated program.
Okay, and then, because the virtual school being so close to real area, which is.
I think that's the sheet metal area.
Sheet metal shop, we, we wired it, but I'm just making sure, because I know the college expressed concern of not using the football field because of not having college players by young kids, so I want to make sure we express the same concern on our end, so that's something we need to make sure.
Well, I, I want you to know that to my knowledge, we didn't have any problems with the college students when they were using the high school with our high school students, and I don't think we would, we're not going to school students either, I think the chances would be to us, the business students. But we are making some effort here to segregate them, segregate the programs. The area there, room 117, we are moving the copy services from out of maintenance, all the copy services out of maintenance, the service center, and we're moving those into J D Adams. More convenience here to get the service in the district.